Like to call to order the July tenth meeting of Clive City Council with clerk please call roll.
Mayor Edwards here, also number Weaver, Eric McCoy here, Jenkins here, mine here.
Here.
Very good. Would you all rise and join us in the quality of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we have the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes. Motion second approve the agenda, further discussion, seeing none, all say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the agenda is approved. Next up we have citizens presentation. This is the opportunity for anyone to address the council. And I admit it is not on the agenda. If we have anyone in the chamber who's wishing to do that, uh, would you please come forward to the podium and identify yourself? In the meantime, uh, Pete will check and see if there's anyone online and wishes to address.
For those getting our attention on in the council chamber, you can use the raise hand function on your zoom screen, bottom of your screen, you'll see your react button. Press that, you should be able to select raising.
Well, Pete's checking on that. I'll just remind everyone that we follow the pillars of character counts and expect everyone here to follow those.
I do not see hands moving up there.
Very good. We'll move to consent approval.
Thank you.
Motion second to approve consent, further discussion, seeing none with the council please vote and little clerk please post that vote. And consent is approved by a vote of five to zero. Amanda, the second consideration.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have the second consideration of proposed ordinance eleven sixty-four, um, which will add requirements for accessory dwelling units to the zoning ordinance. Um, following the last council meeting, um, we did go back and look into the livable space definition and how to get that limited to match the total above grade, uh, living space. Um, and so after consulting with legal counsel, we believe we can leave the livable space definition alone to be more comprehensive or like garden level apartments, basement units that might be ADUs and actually address that square footage limitation um, in the floor area size, just by specifically referencing that the size will be based on um, the total above grade finished living area as the same phrase. It's used in the Iowa real property appraisal manual. Um, so we will get that change accommodated in the text for, um, the third consideration. And we are having some additional conversations with legal counsel on a few of the vague points in the state ordinance or state law, just to, make sure we're all on the same page moving forward. So we'll be back with the third consideration and additional information at the next meeting.
Questions for Amanda.
I'll move that ordinance number one one six four, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Motion second, further discussion. Susan.
I do have a question and I should have reached out before this, but I was talking with a council member from Urbandale and I was expressing surprise about the size, seemed pretty big to me. And she said in their ordinance, that number was the maximum, not the minimum. So can we just make sure we're looking at that number correctly?
Yes, definitely. Um, we'll verify again. Urbandale does have a current ordinance on the books um, that reexisted prior to the state change. So they may be thinking of their existing one.
It's positive. She said they were matching it to the state.
Okay, we'll double check.
She was going to check into it. I meant to reach out. Sorry.
No problem. Uh, legal didn't bring that one up. So I think we're all good on that, but we'll see Neil nodding. We'll verify those.
And ours matches the states then?
Um, for that thousand square foot or fifty percent of the floor area, the stage just refers to size. Um, it is not specific on what is the size of a principal dwelling.
So where do we come up with those numbers?
That's where we're going to use that above grade total living area. It'll match the real property appraisal manual.
Other questions or discussion? Otherwise, would the council please vote and little clerk please post that vote? And the second reading passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Next up, we need to set an date for a public hearing. Matt.
Thanks, Your Honor. Uh, tonight we have, uh, setting a public hearing for phase two of the city hall library facility renovations. This is primarily the city hall, uh, level, the lower level of the facility. Uh, phase one, um, construction is wrapping up. We're actually, uh, doing the punch list walk through, uh, the DCI team and the design team. We've got Michael and Joseph here for the DCI team here tonight. They're doing the punch list walkthrough next week, uh, on phase one. And we're anticipating having the furniture installed, uh, the week of, uh, July twenty first. And then hopefully that we'll have staff moving in the first week of August. And actually your, uh, first August council meeting and all the strategic planning sessions will be in your new council chambers. Um, so we're wrapping up phase one. So now we're looking to phase two. Uh, what we have on the screen here, just wanted to run through a few slides, uh, from the design team in terms of, uh, what the renovations would look like for phase two. It's a little less extensive as what we did in phase one. Uh, we're cutting in new stairs and obviously reconfiguring the council chambers with a little bit more extensive than what we'll be doing on the lower level of facility. So I wanted to note here, this is, uh, just kind of showing blocks of usage areas. Uh, this is kind of the city administration. So city manager's office as well as the administration services department. Um, you can kind of see those areas in purple, uh, community development department, um, as you can see colored in there. So again, relatively staying in similar of parts of the, the floor and then the common spaces where we're actually moving some of the conference room uh, areas to the center part of the building and maximizing the exterior spaces for offices. This also includes, uh, an enhanced lobby. Uh, so the stairs that exist in the lobby today, because of us realigning the stairs on the backside of the secure side, uh, of the facility, um, we'll be able to remove those stairs in the lobby and open up that space even more. Uh, and provide also a restroom facility, just a single restroom on the public side. So therefore we would not have to bring somebody into the private space like we have to today, or the staff side of the space like we have to today for the restroom needs.
Where Pete?
Uh, right.
Good distance from that to throw something to get my attention.
At least he has a window that he can.
That's right.
So this is everything together and then a few images. So, uh, this is the lobby area. So as, uh, the council has seen, we have this preserved moss, uh, of our city logo that's in the backside of the council chambers. Kind of one of the impressive things that we're doing. We're going to do a mini version of it in the lobby. Uh, as you walk in, uh, to the city hall lobby, which we're really excited about. Uh, and as you can see, just a much, uh, secure space for both staff and the public in terms of our reception area, but still having to be feel relatively open with, uh, glass and, uh, exchange area just below the glass. Uh, one thing you'll notice is we have kind of this little side space, uh, from the main reception area. That is a couple, it serves a couple of purposes. Number one, we have to have a kind of ADA accessible level desk uh, for that reception area. So it's a lower sitting desk, but also is for, um, because we're going to be combining administrative services and community development together in the same reception area. So, uh, as you maybe have seen before, Kelly, our administrative specialist in community development, but sometimes have to work a little bit more extensively with a resident or a business through a permitting process or bring up some maps. And so what you can kind of see there is we're going to have a screen on the wall there to the side and the ability for somebody to sit down and that person be there with the, the laptop on the other side, kind of running through some of that to have a little bit easier interaction than the high desk. Um, also you could have a utility billing specialist who has to work through a billing issue with, uh, somebody and want to do it in a little bit more of a private space than an open reception area. So we kind of see a number. It's kind of our drop in space, if you will, um, but still maintains kind of a security line, uh, for the public and staff. This is another view of the lobby walking out. So, uh, the stairs kind of reorientating, uh, keeping the ramp, uh, for the ADA accessibility on that lower level. Uh, work office area. So this would be kind of the hub of, of the lower level where we would have a, have a coffee bar kitchenette. Um, actually it's really just a coffee bar, uh, because we'll have the shared break room, as you've all seen in the tours for the both levels of city hall. This is also where the work, uh, work office space or the workroom space and the printer will all be in this kind of shared center part of the lower level. And this is another view of one of the, as you work your way from the center area, one of the interior conference rooms will actually have glass to allow us to borrow some daylight into that space from some of the office areas. So if you can kind of imagine where that person is standing, you work your way down that hallway, that would be my office at the end of the hallway, where it's at today. This is another view of that drop in space, um, the reception area. And then, uh, the back hall of the, uh, back conference room or the Northwest Conference Room that you're familiar with today, we're actually converting that into an office space. Uh, kind of a flex space for the building department. So the inspectors and Ryan will be back here and kind of have an open uh, space to lay out plans and, and they kind of have, they have, uh, ideas on how they want to shape that space. We're not going to have it overly prescribed. But that's kind of us moving the conference tables, uh, rooms into the center and then maximizing the window spaces for offices. And this is just an example of one of the offices, uh, what they would look like. So that is a kind of a run through. Again, not a lot of extensive changes, but definitely a full sale update um, to this lower level. Uh, as was included in the packet, uh, we have a preliminary cost estimate um, from the DCI group of roughly about one point seven million for construction of the full renovation of this space. Um, and we'll be, uh, we're setting this public hearing, be taking that out to bid here over the next three weeks. Um, getting those bids in August, we feel this is a, a really good time period to be seeking bids as you've got a number of contractors that might be coming off of school related work in the summertime here. Um, they have to have that done before the school year starts. And we'll be looking to maybe move right into our project in September. So our anticipation is to start construction in late September. And then in mid-September, we'll be, uh, switching the staff. So currently we have the leisure services team over at the Harbach Center. They will be coming back to the space in the phase one area in the beginning of August. And then, uh, the administrative services and community development teams will be moving over to the Harbach Center in the middle of September during this construction process. With that, Your Honor, that's, uh, what I have. And we included links to, uh, uh, other documents in the packet. Um, be happy to answer any questions.
Susan.
I think it looks good. I'm curious what kind of flex space is there? Does employment changes? Anything like that? It's hard for me to tell from this where the extra space is. Some of the offices look pretty big, but they all have walls without the ability to flex around in case we have need to slide other people in.
Right. So we have a couple, uh, back to the beginning.
One thought being in mind, economic development down the road, since so many others in the smarter than us have that and we still don't. So that would be an exam.
A couple of flex spaces that we've outlined is, uh, this area, as I mentioned, the building department area. Um, we are anticipating having, uh, the ability to put, um, a workspace in there, particularly in the summertime when we have an intern. So again, that space can always be repurposed. That's kind of a flex space. And then the space outside, uh, my office is also another flex space where we will have, uh, an office available. Uh, we see this as another opportunity for whether it's an an intern and is for a short duration, or again, if we had the need to put another staff position, we could do some shuffling and have somebody move into this space. So those are the two primary flex spaces that we have, uh, in this lower level.
I just like to make sure we've thought that through as well as possible. Most new spaces I'm touring lately are planning for that kind of expansion.
Yeah. Yeah, we, and we're definitely, uh, operating within the existing footprint, uh, of the lower level. So there isn't any expansion of the space. So, um, we felt we were able to actually get a little bit more office space with just reconfiguring the floor versus than what we have today. So we do have at least a couple of flex space options. And then we'll additionally have, we have some flex space as well in the phase one portion. For example, the IT office area, we had an additional office, the area where James will be. Um, and we also have that as additional flex space in the first quarter or the first phase.
And I suppose give up conference rooms and other alternatives.
Yeah, that all, that is always an option. Um, thankfully, hopefully we've got a couple of options before that. You know that those conference rooms get used quite a bit. And one thing you'll notice is, uh, my office kind of had that conference room space. We're kind of shrinking my office, then moving that conference room into that center core area so that it's available to all staff. Um, instead of it being awkward if I'm in there, them feeling sad, feeling weird using it. If I'm gone, now it's outside. That was part of the reason of shrinking my office down and move that conference room out.
Michael.
Good things. Uh, along that line, when I saw one of the pictures up there, I know it was just a mock-up of a desk, but for those attached to the wall to, to Susan's point, hoping we're getting away from that preattached furniture. It can't be moved around and it's connected to the wall, right? It's, it's plaguing my day jobs office. Or it'd be just a good point. So the moves things around inside the office, you can easily get some people in. That's what's right with, uh, furniture that moves instead of being bolted to the wall. Files cans, probably a thing in the house and none of those. The other question, you know, I have to have an answer tonight. It's one point seven nine on construction, one point seven, I added the nine. One point seven. What percentage of that or not of that, but above that goes to furniture? So like Pauline, what is the?
Two point two, two point two. So that's in there. Yeah. So it's, uh, two point two all in. That's design team costs, construction management costs, future costs. And then we got one point seven is the hard constructions, the contracts that we're bidding out.
Two point two includes contingencies as well.
And it also has contingency in there. The, the, uh, DCI team has it within that one point seven million. They have a contingency in it. And then we have an overall project contingency with a two point two.
What did phase one cost?
Uh, hard construction, we're a little over two million, uh, right now. Uh, I have, I can get you that number.
Roughly, roughly.
I would say we're probably two and a half, two point six. I had to say all in with all the, all the contracts and the FF and E. With that's a, I can get you that number.
We, we discussed, it was about a five million dollar total renovation.
And if the bidding environment stays, uh, we've been hearing that it continues to be, uh, aggressive, which we're hoping that stays that way for over the next month. But, uh, to council member McCoy's question, yes, we are pushing more to the furniture options versus, um, mounting. So for example, in the reception area, almost all of that is furniture, with the exception of the actual counter, uh, transaction counter. But everything behind it is furniture. And we wanted to be able to maximize the standups and options for staff as well. So yeah, we're definitely leaning into the furniture options everywhere we can.
That was, that was my follow-up question. So many of the, the modern desktops have that standup option for employees. Will they be given that option with the furniture that they can stand up or sit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And that's similar to what we did in phase one for those office areas.
Other questions? Otherwise, what we're looking for is a resolution setting. We have a second. Motion second to set the public hearing for discussion, seeing none with the council please vote and little clerk please post that vote. And the public hearing is set by a vote of five to zero. Pete, you're up next. Stormwater.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, my name is Aaron Gwinnett. I'm a water resource engineer with McClure Engineering Company. And, uh, thank you, sir. Uh, my team has been helping the city of Clive, uh, with updates to the city's stormwater management.
Is your team behind you?
Yes. Absolutely. Uh, this is Fiona, my daughter. She was, she just said, Dad, I'd like to know more about the civic function of municipalities in Iowa. And, uh, so there we go. Uh, so the exciting world of stormwater. Um, let's see here. I will, I'm going to kind of just go through the basics of it. Uh, I'm an engineer. I can get into the details if you want. Feel free to stop me anytime with any questions, but uh, I know sometimes when we get talking about water, we'll glaze over sometimes. So I'll keep it kind of high level. I'd be happy to answer any detailed questions if you want.
And Aaron, before you just jump right into slides of
Yes, sir.
Our water resources engineer, Ray Tofaheza, is also on the, um, call with us tonight or in the meeting with us, but participating virtually. So if you have some Clive specific questions, Ray can help us out.
Yeah, good point. Thank you. Uh, so this is just kind of a quick walkthrough, uh, of the major changes that we are proposing, uh, with the manual. We have prepared, uh, drafts. That's basically in pre-final form. And so we wanted to share with you tonight, some of the major changes and, uh, have some discussion on, you know, how you feel about things before we finalize it, wrap it up, call it good to go. So, uh, just a quick tour and then like I say, we'll have a little bit more detail, um, as we go through it. But generally, first and foremost, the main reason we did this, the impetus was, uh, compliance with SF four five, so Iowa's new law on stormwater and topsoil. Um, so that kind of sparked a need to make some changes. We figured while we're going through it, uh, we would kind of modernize the, the manual a bit. Look at the calculation methods, bring them up to date, as well as kind of streamline and clarify the process for developers and build in a little bit of flexibility, uh, and address some, uh, just some friction points, uh, that have been experienced, uh, as people work through the development process. So that said, uh, SF four fifty-five, um, if you don't travel in these circles, uh, basically it reduced cities and counties in Iowa ability to regulate strict stormwater controls. Uh, it also had some effects on topsoil, um, which didn't have huge changes for the city of Clive based on the way your post-construction stormwater manual was already set up. That didn't make a big difference. Uh, but fundamentally, the, the big issue is, uh, because of the changes that were built into SF forty-five, development within Clive would have seen huge increases in stormwater release rates coming from development sites, greenfield sites. Uh, areas that were not previously developed. Um, we found by looking at a, a big sample of case studies, uh, recent developments in Clive, as well as other developments that my team has worked on. If they were in Clive, would have seen something like nineteen percent increase in stormwater, leaving those sites after they're developed under these new rules, but using Clive's previous post-construction stormwater manual methods. Redevelopment sites would have seen almost three times more stormwater coming off of these sites. And so obviously, as you know, there's some issues flooding. This would have been disastrous. And so we knew how to do something to try and reclaim that control, but still abide by the new law. Uh, it's good to know that small storm events and controls were not affected by SF forty-five. So anything for the five, five-year event and less, uh, there's been no changes so far. And so the two big changes that we made, uh, that we're proposing, I should say, uh, for the manual are changes in what's called the rainfall distribution, uh, and changes in the depth of rainfall that are used in the calculation of uh, detention facilities and stormwater conveyance for the city. This gets a little bit nerdy. Like I say, I can go into more if you want, but in essence, the rainfall distribution, I'm going to go back and forth a little bit. These are two graphs of rainfall distributions. Uh, in essence, it's how fast the rainfall falls during a storm event. The one on the right is called the SCS twenty-four hour rainfall distribution. This is what just about everybody in the center of the country has been using since the nineteen sixties. It's fairly outdated. What you're seeing is that over a twenty-four hour period, rainfall starts really light, kind of a drizzle. And then right in the middle at the twelve hour mark, you get this super heavy downpour and then it tapers off and goes back to a drizzle for another nine hours or so. That worked for a while, but especially, uh, with modern science and hydrology and whatnot, we're finding that's not really terribly accurate. There are a bunch of these different rainfall distributions that you can use in calculation methods, but a lot of cities are starting to modernize and change distributions that are more appropriate for their area, uh, and such. Temporal six-hour rainfall distribution is what we are proposing that designers in Clive use. Stepping back real quick, uh, we did not invent this on our own. Uh, like I said, there's a bunch of these, uh, out there. And, uh, there's different reasons that designers use different things, but, um, we essentially picked up a, a tip from the Kansas City area, Mark, it's called the Metropolitan Area Region Council, not in counties around Kansas City. They're in the process of switching to the exact same distribution right now as well, for basically similar reasons. Um, the point of all this, as well as the next slide, we're talking about depth, is that effectively what we're trying to do is regain the same sort of level of stormwater control that Clive had before SF four fifty-five, but still make it scientifically valid, be fair to designers, have that control, but also not be onerous. And, uh, as Doug said, increase the cost of doing business in Clive. We want to keep it basically the same, but compliant to law.
Now, Aaron, do you know if other metro communities are using that new model or would we be the first?
The temporal six hour, as far as I know, you would be the first in Iowa. Um, there are other communities looking at things like the, there's one called the Huff one hour. Um, there's a variety of these out there. Um, but this is, this is fairly new.
Has it been tested? Like, hey, see you saying they're good, looking at adopting it as this model, but tested in other communities?
Uh, I have not taken a panel of all communities all around. We have several offices in Kansas City area. So that's why, uh, we kind of had a finger on this pulse. We knew this was coming. They've been looking at it for, um, over a year as well. And so we've run these models on a bunch of test scenarios. We took recent developments, uh, that happened in Clive. And we basically reran those using the, this distribution as well as depth changes that we're proposing to look at what difference that would make. How would these developments then differ? Were they designed using this standard?
What kind of results and ceiling areas, models?
Brilliant question. If you don't mind, uh, can I come back to that? I've got a slide for that. But thank you for asking. It's a great segue.
Couple, couple of points I'd add there. We did the process of coming up with this concept, running past the, uh, executive director of Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership, who had mixed it, her job to kind of keep a pulse on what's happening throughout the industry as well. And when Lulu, who we all, uh, knew, because she did the modeling before her PhD, uh, comparing it to Park and, uh, Shadow Creek. She validated that, yes, this looks like good, good science to her as well.
Yep, absolutely. There's a number of communities, um, that are shifting to all different models and ways of looking at rain. I believe it was, I think it was Lulu that actually turned me on to Philadelphia, I believe, is using, uh, a model storm of record. So development designers have to use basically the biggest nastiest storm that has happened in the area and use that in their design calculations. Um, there's, there's a variety of different communities going in different directions. We looked at some that were much more extreme. That puff one hour would have, uh, been a very extreme limitation on release rate. SCS two is a different, and we kind of went sort of in the middle. Uh, but you'll see in a couple of slides why we, why we kind of settled on the combination of solutions that we did, if you will.
Aaron, also can I, I want to jump click on the bottom point there about this being a win-win. So kind of walk back with the eighteen or so months. One of the primary critiques we heard during that discussion about this legislation was that when developers are forced to put a huge detention area on their property, they are finding that they're either not appropriately sized or the opportunity cost to use that land for something else is really, is causing them some heartburn. So Aaron will get into this, I think, in a moment, but we wanted to be responsive to that. The intent of the bill from the author's, uh, perspective was really to find a way to sort of decrease the size of these detention areas. Now, there are a lot of reasons why you might flex that to kind of get the overall compliance you want, but just looking at detention area, this model is a win for them too, because it's going to be, end up shrinking the size of the detention that they may need, they may elect to get into that they don't use their detention to achieve some other results to.
Did we run that by the Home Builders Association to see if, what their thoughts were on that?
We have not. Um, but it is the type of thing that, as I've been working in ISWAP, I've been asking other communities, have you found your new normal yet? Have you found your new normal? And the answer has been a range. So it's taken time for folks to get their revisions done. I also want to make sure that as we're doing this work, that we are putting you all in a position to make the policy choices for the city of Clive. That doesn't mean we want to be obtuse to what others want as well. But I think that as we've gone through this with all of the engagement we already had with the legislation and understanding the direction we all received from you, which was to keep the city's ability to control this, but don't make it difficult or more onerous for developers to keep getting to good in Clive. We wanted to honor that commitment, I think, first, which we have done. And if this is the direction the, the council chooses to take, I would be comfortable in going in and ga- I would be comfortable in going and engaging with our partners to make sure that they understand it. And also some of the other things we're going to get into, some other flexibility that we may have in the future to move into more regional practices, which could be another win for developers. If we can get away from some of the small onesy twosy things, because we're going to put them into some bigger practices instead.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to reach out to these folks as we move along with this process and make sure that our. Our friends in the, in the Home Builder Association and the other development world are well aware of the change we're making, what we're doing. And really listening and getting input from them too. I don't think there's anything bad having an open dialogue with those folks.
I mean, I heard two things here. One, if this is the direction you're following, that we'll reach out and make sure everybody is aware, aware. Had an Eric saying, let's start the home builder. To me, that would be prior to implementing rule, meaning. It's still like us to set the rules, right? Not them. And I think we all know that, but what if they have something in there to avoid it? Right? Or you do a quick theory and 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 online and, you know, the huffling comes up is the best in the Midwest for this area, yes. Right? So that already puts.
No, you're right. I mean, talking to them, you know, uh, here's what we suggest. Something's come. You don't get to stop that. Right? But to have an open discussion, to be under the table.
I I'd get the feedback prior before we just lay it on them. I don't think that's bad.
I'm happy to do that with uh with Dan. I can reach out to the HP.
Yeah.
Like that's a smart one.
Now. Since they put their cards on the table through this process, it's good to remember what their cards are. Their cards are. That had they been able to go further than what they got to with HF this bill, they would have done it.
Right.
So I don't think that that position has probably changed.
Yeah, their goals are different than ours, right?
I know.
But um, and and then I think you go in with the the. The position that we're going to do something here, right? And so how can, how can we help? How can you help us make it better?
Right. The other, the other thing to remember is that. Cause this was preemption statewide, there was an assumption that they were making, which was. Yeah, we understand the particularity of every community's needs and where they are in their growth. But we believe that this preemption is more important than taking into account the uniqueness of those communities, their priorities and their watersheds. And so that's an assumption that we can't get away from. We're, we're gonna be, one way to understand Clive is its geographic limits and where we sit within this watershed. The home builders understand that, but they decided that it was more important to have a statewide standard that preempted some of those other concerns. And so. I don't think there's any squaring that circle. There's just going to be some differences in the assumptions that both teams are going to be working with. And I, Dan understands that as well, and I, I know I can have a good conversation with them about it. Like all these things we've experienced, neither side may love any of it or completely, but all of us are going to have to find a way to live with something that's.
Thinking it goes a little better though, what we tell them. Thanks for your feedback. Now, Dan, you've done this, but your feedback. Yes, we know where we're at. This council done that perfect. A decade right into this water stuff, so. And hang on.
That also reflects a measure of transparency from the council's part as well. Hey, look, this is coming down the road. So we're gonna do it. Let's get your feedback. Uh, it just, I, we're, we're better off that way.
Only thing I would add to it is just making sure we're not allowing that group to hold up. Any decisions of this council in terms of uh, as that has been shown in the past, where they will spend extra time. And delay, delay. I think we need to have, be clear that at least what's being, something's being presented to the council or decision. To not delay our implementation of the main ball, um, uh, especially, you know. Just to make sure that that doesn't happen would be my advice.
I agree with that. We have the timeline urgency with this, but just out of curiosity.
So when the bill was initially passed, we wanted to get right into compliance. So we made a small change that said. Nothing in this bill, the interpretation of this policy shall be, shall be inconsistent with state law. And that was also an acknowledgement that everybody's gonna have to figure this out, right? There was a ton of gray and a ton of science that needed to be done to sort out exactly what was compliance going to need to look like. Um, so. Now that we've done that work, uh, that that short revision, sort of the, the pressure that's on us is if we get a development that comes to us. And say they, there's uncertainty, I guess, about well, how, how it's going to be played out in Clive. Then I think we could get little, things get a little sticky. It hasn't happened to us exactly in the last twelve months in great part because. Doug has a wonderful hand when it comes to working with developers to get things done the right way.
That's coming. We have a, we have a site plan.
Yep.
That this would impact. That will be on your next council.
Yep. So we've got some, we need to be moving, but but even with the, even if we were to deal with that one that's coming, I think that there's probably a path forward, but. I can move quickly here to get the input from others to make sure we get this rolling.
And we'll talk about that spot too, where for the Dana Distillery property, where that impact is, it's the fee it blew up.
Yep, we're gonna get to that in a second.
Well, one thing, it seems to me, there are a couple of things working in our favor, and that is. The public is aware of catastrophic flooding national that's causing governments to be paying attention. And there's uh some of the conversations about dismantling the Fila and making states responsible. The fact that we are trying to be reasonable about protecting. People and property. So maybe a little better attention than it has in the past. So.
Very well said.
I think it's worth bringing out any of those conversations.
Do that. Thank you. And we're going to get to a point that speaks very much to your, to your assessment there, counsel.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, uh, and I think as Pete alluded to, um, I should, I, I usually say this at the beginning of any hydrology and hydraulic speech, just to, you know, as a teaser, but uh. It fundamentally comes down to uh release rate versus volume. They're diametrically posed. What cities and downstream neighbors really want is release rates from developments to go down, because that means less flooding, less. Damage from erosion, smaller storm sewer pipes, which are less expensive. What developers want is less volume on their site, because it takes up land area. It's expensive. It's something that they have to build that they don't get necessarily anything out of. But the smaller your volume is on site, the greater your release rate is going to be. Lower your release rate is volume. So what we're looking to do is magically balance those things uh so that we can um, yeah. Control rates, not have bigger problems, but also not require developers to create larger volumes than are really needed. Which are the, for the math changes, but it's also part of the, the updating this, we're finding. This SCS type two standard that everybody's been using is kind of overly aggressive, to be honest. Um, that graph that has, okay, I'm an engineer. I can't give a presentation without a graph in it. Uh, so that vertical line on the right. Creates this peak discharge that, that creates these huge flow rates and it creates overly large detention basins. It's not necessarily realistic. So in going through this and trying to modernize it, what we found is that this is actually kind of overly aggressive as it is. So that gives us a little bit of flexibility when we change the method, now we calculate this to try and get kind of a win-win for both parties. To be honest, when we started this exercise, I wasn't necessarily sure we could get a win-win for both parties, uh, but it actually kind of worked out on average in the map. So we talked about uh the rainfall distribution, which is basically just kind of a nerdy tweak in the way that the math and the models run. This one's a little bit more obvious. Uh, we're also proposing to increase the depth of rainfall that is used. In calculating the detention volume requirements. So most communities use uh and Sudas, Iowa Sudas as well recommends the NOAA Atlas fourteen precipitation, which is kind of a pinpoint. Estimate of precipitation at any point in the, in the country. Uh, what we are posing is to, in the proposed condition, when they're calculating detention volumes. Add twenty five percent to what the peak uh rainfall is for any given model depth. The reason is fundamentally, this is a measure for uh climate change, uh sustainability and resilience. We know that rainfall is increasing uh in this region of the country. Got another slide that substantiates that a bit. As well, we know that when we build infrastructure in the civil world, that's going to last twenty five, fifty or more years. And so. To use the old phrase, basically a failure to plan for that additional rainfall in infrastructure without know it's going to last is kind of, I need to fail. It's not accounting for that future rainfall. So uh, adding a, a margin onto the, the rainfall for the proposed condition builds in a little bit more volume for more rain. How do you know it's coming? Everybody's studied it, lived up works on this. Um, I'm sure you all know the Army Corps of Silver Jackets did a study, several studies here in Clive, and they found. Twenty to forty five percent increases in precipitation. Uh, there are EPA documents specifically for Iowa that have shown. Over the last fifty years, these are not predictions and models. This is actual hard rainfall data. For the last fifty years. Rainfall itself, annual average has increased five to ten percent. The four wettest days of the year, thirty five percent increases in rain. The amount of water flowing in streams, twenty percent increases. I just heard a story the other day. Uh, the same kind of NOAA uh rainfall observations for the country, the northeast, uh, the wettest storms of the year. Sixty percent increases, upper Midwest here, forty percent increases. Uh, so we know there's more water that has been coming and it's getting wetter and wetter. That trend is going to continue. When you just look at NOAA Atlas fourteen and you look at the actual rainfall for any given location, it gives an average expected amount and it gives an upper and a lower confidence interval. If you just look at the upper confidence interval, which was another metric that we considered for this, that would be a twenty eight percent increase. Uh, we originally modeled this idea on a New Jersey standard, which was recently implemented. That has a variety of different percentages depending on the, the location and the application, but in general, that was an average thirty five percent. Increase in precipitation that they require developments maintain onsite. So uh, when we looked at it, we thought twenty five percent seems like a fairly reasonable number. It's kind of in the middle of the average uh increases that we expect to see. Uh, and as you'll see, it, it balances out with basically what um developments have been required to maintain historically. So uh, the effect of these two major changes together, the precipitation and the distribution change. Basically recreates about the level of stormwater control that city of Clive had prior to the implementation of SF four fifty five. It better represents actual storms uh and it maintains similar flow rates, similar control to what you had before. So essentially it complies with the new law and it better fits actual rainstorms. So one of the, one of the reasons that the proponents for SF fifty five brought this forward. Uh, I have to admit, from the, the community of stormwater engineers that practice these kind of things. One of the things that we did was not very clear to people, and I think they thought that it was unfair. Uh, the imposition that a redevelopment site use the pre-settlement, pre-europeans arriving in Iowa. Land condition for assessing the runoff and use that as a basis for how water should leave the land now. They kind of saw that as an affront, like, why should we have to do that? Why should we make it any better than it was? Well, different communities might have different motivations if you have severe flooding issues, for instance. So we use that as kind of a, a fail-safe way to uh change the calculations and get more stormwater control. In retrospect, it did kind of invite a little bit of speculation. Why are we doing that? It didn't make a lot of sense to people who don't do these things. So what we're doing now is basically correcting that. And we're trying to say, okay, this is the most, most mathematically accurate. Way that we can possibly do this. And so it's a little bit more defensible, if you will, from a math and science standpoint.
I would, I would like to emphasize that very important point that the home builders and their allies on the debate brought forward. This really was a confusing element of the way that we were. Talking about how we do stormwater, to be able to base this now in math. And the concurrent conditions that we have and what our math tells us, our modeling tells us that our conditions will see in the future, which we do appropriate need to account for, because this infrastructure needs to perform that long. Like this is a really important next step, and I think was responsive to many of the critiques that they had.
Can you go back a slide?
Yep.
I was trying to think in the, we're like the NOAA Atlas four, I did percent downwind slope, gives that twenty eight percent increase in your rainfall, right? Uh, that gives ninety percent. Did you say you're bookmarking your twenty, no, I'm sorry, what you're suggesting from going to slightly before that for us to go to. Oh, twenty five or increase twenty five percent?
Yes.
From. Where we are today, where are we?
Yeah, so basically Atlas fourteen, you go to a spot on the map, you click on it and it'll tell you for that exact spot.
Yeah.
For various storms, how much rain is going to fall? For the one year storm, it's about two point seven inches. Yeah, yeah.
So, but then you bookmark it, if he goes forward again, you bookmarked. Clive as that pin. And New Jersey as your bookmark or your bookends. Uh, to my head, that's an extreme stretch.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, the, the, the point about New Jersey is here, this is just another part of the country, not analogous to us with their numbers. That's why they aren't up there, but just to say. That they are likewise having a modification factor.
But he used the number as thirty eight or thirty five to ours to say, we're gonna, we're going to just. Be okay with meeting in the middle. You've used New Jersey as your bookend. You've used us current as our other bookend. I'm calling foul on the New Jersey bookend to start.
We can, I, I, I.
Which might swing that number up or down if you're going to relate it to a Kansas or a Nebraska.
We're not including that in the app.
True.
We're not. So take a look at the top number there. The Silver Jackets project was about what does the, what, what does this armed watershed, the Walnut Creek watershed? Look like as it continues to develop and is completely built out. Their prediction using that Atlas fourteen data and then modeling what they expect will be in the watershed in the future. And what we know from Atlas fourteen is going to be the waterfall specifically here for Clive. They're predicting a twenty to four, forty five percent increase.
So over the Atlas fourteen?
Over the Atlas fourteen there. Yeah.
Which, which I get, and this is a non-foreword, so perhaps you can get me there in the next week or two, but. I understand that's that, it doesn't sound like we took in effect that study. We took in effect of where we are today on Atlas fourteen.
Correct. Yes.
And then we use the Jersey and we said somewhere in the middle we should be.
Not, not necessarily. Nope.
No.
It looks like it, by the way, we put that, but no.
That's, that's, that's not it. The only reason we mentioned, we're just using that as an example of other places in the country are using this policy decision and making it specific to their conditions. We're proposing a similar modification factor policy, but we're going to right-size it based on the data that's specific to Clive.
Well said, sir. Uh, yes, we looked at a number of changes to stormwater policies all over the country, because there's a lot of that going on right now.
And, and I have apologies if that came across as confusing. I can see where that's confusing now that we would take sort of a. Statement that's about are these reasonable policies versus here's the reasonable numbers for Clive. So we can clarify that on a future slide, but no, we did not take numbers from another region for what their predicted rainfall modifications are going to look like due to climate change. And then try and hoist it onto the Midwest or Clive. We took very specific Clive numbers and said. This is what our data tells us, this research that we did, it's specific to us, and now we're going to, we're going to build to that scale.
Yeah, that's what he said.
I'll just leave it around.
Yes, sir.
Let's keep, keep rolling.
Yep, you bet. Uh, okay, uh, we'll be, let's see where it was. Uh, yeah, it's, okay. So numerically, here are some, uh, some results. Uh, we had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of rows in the spreadsheets. Uh, on various models that we ran on case study sites. Most of them are from Clive. A few are from other communities. We work all over Midwest. Uh, but Cooper Sock in particular was one redevelopment site that we focused on, uh, just because it was recent. Um, it's a good case study. We know that Clive. Is looking forward to a fair amount of redevelopment type development specifically. And so we kind of wanted to focus in on that. Uh, so the two groups here are basin volume size and release rate. Uh, then there's some results for Cooper Sock and then all redevelopment sites uh in that group. Then there's some results for Cooper Sock and then all redevelopment sites in that group. So using these new rules, basic, the proposed changes, the volume, the detention volume for Cooper Sock would have been about twenty-six percent less. The release rate be about eighty-five percent more. That seems like a huge increase. It's almost doubling. Bear in mind, it's a really small release rate. That's a fairly small development site. And so we went from one cubic feet per second to two cubic feet.
Meaning we're increasing the amount we're releasing.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
That seems counterintuitive.
Uh, it does, but this is just one example. When we put them all together, because that's what the river sees, right? The river sees this site releasing stormwater and that site that's different. It's got different soil. It's got different slope. All of these different sites drain. And so what you get is the net, the net effect in the river is the combination runoff from all these different kinds of sites. What the river actually would see is basically the exact same release rate, some are less, some are more, but it balances out to be about zero. Similar for detention volume. It would be a smaller detention volume. So in this case, the developer would be a little bit happier because they got to spend less money on retaining stormwater. But in general, you put all the sites together, some are less, some are more, it comes out to about a one percent difference. So using all the different scenarios we looked at, different rainfall distributions, different precipitation depths. They were all coming in in different places as far as reductions or increases. We don't want to irritate the downstream neighbors and we don't want to irritate the developers. So this is about the happiest medium and the win-win case for just about everybody. It's also more scientifically defensible because we got better methods, more current math, more current science. And so generally speaking, it's about the same.
So is that the goal going in was to try to have similar release rate of pre-law? Except was that the goal or?
The goal is, we heard it from, and I credit you, Captain, we were in particular, I think we articulated it very well when we started this process. It was, it was, we want to make sure that we can still do what we need to do, but let's not make it more onerous on those developers and on ourselves, right? As I say, because we hold ourselves to a similar standard. So I believe.
Eventually it gets down to the home.
Yeah, it does. It does. And so I think the data here shows you that, well, the bill had its effect. There are increases generally in release rates, but they are managed in a way that we feel like still allows the city to do what it's responsible, what it is responsible to do, which is safely convey stormwater, protect people and property.
Well said. Uh, okay, so those, those were the big changes that were proposed. There's a whole slew of smaller changes posing as well. A big one is just kind of streamlining and clarifying the entire manual we've gone through. We've cleaned it up between our team and the city's team. We've gone through a number of things and just kind of cleaned up the process, made it more clear. And as well, we've added some flexibility for challenging sites in particular. So sites, for instance, adjacent to a floodplain where you don't have a whole lot of lower topography to detain the stormwater before you're in the floodplain where it really matters. Some sites like that, maybe particularly small sites or the challenging locations, fee and lieu strategy might be better, where the developer would simply pay approximately the same cost as the development. I'm sorry, the detention practice into a fund that then could be used to institute other detention practices somewhere in the same watershed, get the same effect, but not down there at the bottom in the floodplain or in some other challenging location. That's another method that a lot of other communities are using as well because they're finding they've got places where they just can't quite do what it was that they wanted to do. So that adds some flexibility as well. That's obviously reviewed on a case-by-case basis and we lost the slides.
Yeah, I'll hold that up.
That's right. I've got them all perfectly memorized, correct?
It doesn't ever build up that recurrence intervals, the rainfall recurrence intervals. Thousand five hundred to fifty, what do you use?
Sorry, sorry, the.
Was it a thousand years, five hundred year intervals?
Oh, for the recurrence interval?
Yeah.
So hundred years is the basic that we look at for detention. So your standard detention scenario is the runoff from the proposed site in the one hundred year storm released at the five-year pre-development rate. After SF four fifty-five, that pre-development rate is pre-development literally at the time construction commences. So for the most part, we look at the hundred year. That's for the standard regulatory storm. We generally suggest that designers look at a variety of other storms, including the five hundred year for resiliency. Some communities mandate the management of the five hundred year storm. And then stand out of the five hundred year floodplain, et cetera. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was surprised it was a hundred.
It's just a standard round number. Technically, it's the storm that has a one percent chance of happening in any given year. A colleague from the Iowa Flood Center likes to say that the hundred-year storm terminology unfortunately escaped the scientific community and now people think it's going to happen once every hundred years and it's not even close to that. That's much more frequent. As you probably, yes, sir.
Remember, how are we calculating the end look?
So it's essentially, the way I understand it is if they were to be able to put detention, that detention practice on their site, what would have been the cost of that installation? Basically taking those dollars and dedicating it in the case like the Dana property is an example of this that you will see. They are in the flood, partially in the floodplain with their product. So they cannot put detention, rated in floodplain doesn't function correctly. And so value of that would then be dedicated to the city and then we would be obligated then to use that and maybe a combination of others to then build a facility that seems that same. Do we, did I get that roughly right?
Yep.
Sorry.
And Ray, if you want to chime in on that too.
Yeah. Be tiptoeing into engineering, very, very careful.
That's basically it. We work with a number of other communities that have similar processes and that's basically it. It's kind of a negotiation as the development is being planned. And a lot of times developers do like that as an option because it gives them some flexibility.
We've, I know the staff team has worked on a map to show for specifically for floodplain-related properties, how many properties in Clive would be impacted, potentially be impacted by the fee and lieu of just determined being able to redevelop it. So as you know, in Clive, we want to agree that we have a number of properties that are in the floodplain. So at this time, the proposal, the recommendation is just to focus on specifically those floodplain impacted properties and not going beyond for the fee and lieu of opportunity.
I guess I would just add, hi, this is Ray. I, I would add that when we were thinking of the way that the fee in lieu is calculated and the pieces that go into that, we were thinking down the road, if this program were to expand to not necessarily just the floodplain, could, does this set a good precedent? And I just want to thank the team on having like a lot of really good precedent setting input there as well. I guess for right now, only the floodplain impacted properties.
So coming up with a fair calculation will take some doing it, right? To practice it, but as that described it right now, we could go forward and continue to tweak the manual, but Matt Bondi there got that right on how we would come up with the number.
No surprise. I haven't, I haven't been a fan of the ponds, staking over stormwater ponds and all that, right? Developers still not. Here we are going further into that with fee and loom and with dome maintenance considered for ten, twenty, thirty years out, right? And so we take on these projects that the developer would have to continue and with our new, you know, staff that we put on to task with this, we're now building stuff at today's dollars to maintain it for the next fifty years at zero dollars. And so I don't know how you come up with a fair number, but again, we're going to be maintaining these ponds long after we're all gone here and they're going to be extremely costly to dredge and, and take care of to keep the capacity going. So I think they're passing a permanent liability onto the city by us allowing them to do us, one, taking over the ponds as we've done, two, doing fee and lieu without consideration of ongoing maintenance. Don't know how you come up with that number. Don't know it's fair, but it's real.
And that's true to a point, but the developer isn't going to be responsible for that pond in perpetuity. It's going to be for a finite period. So I would think you could come up with a number.
Well, it's going to be finite because to my understanding, whoever owns that property would technically be responsible to upkeep that to the capacity it was supposed to have. That's, am I correct with that or?
We, we have not considered what I'll call like a maintenance multiplier over time.
We have, we have. But I'm saying, but I'm saying currently with some of the stormwater stuff we're doing, we're starting to check these ponds for capacity and if they have the original capacity or not, was my understanding why we're starting this program. We were going to start with our own ponds and then move out to the development ponds. Kind of like you need to have fifty trees. Well, after ten years, only the property have four trees. And if you do something different, you now have to have fifty trees again, right? So who's going to maintain in the future? The owner of that property has to maintain the pond.
I was, you were talking about our existing ponds.
I was talking about Dana. So in terms of the calculation, the in lieu of what staff is working on is incorporating maintenance cost.
Or whatever we're going to build.
Correct. And I'm assuming it.
Well done.
I'm wrong then.
Good. I'm just good with what I got there because I'm, I'm in the post of the day or discussion because that's the next one that's coming here, but.
Not every strategy is a pond though, right? There should be other. Could be a wetland, could be, could be oxbow. That may have less maintenance.
Sure.
Right, but yeah, your point. We're trying, and I think again, it's going to be an estimate, right? Trying to calculate in today's dollars what a maintenance cost would be for a facility. And you don't know if it's going to be combined with two other fee and lieu of projects that you're making one bigger facility that might have a different. I mean, some of that's going to be a guessing game in the future, but we're creating the obligation. We are creating an obligation on us to construct said, some type of facility because we need to account for that detention.
Now, the worry I have is that whatever that number is so big that I got to put it up front now and where I could stretch that out over thirty, forty years, you know, can you do something on charge enough over the years rather than upfront? Because that's a big giant fiscal money for what you're going to do perhaps in the next thirty years, right? And now I'm paying for that as the owner of this one time. It may not be the owner of that here. But how do you attach it to the properties?
Yeah. Go ahead, Doug.
The placeholder that we had for right now, so I misunderstood the question earlier, but the pieces that went into that uh, fee were the anticipated construction costs, the design fees, the land value, the long-term maintenance and an inflation consideration. The long-term maintenance piece was generally calculated out at a per square foot using the basin area calculated. So we just said, how big is the detention basin going to be? We assume it's a dry basin. We asked the Parks Department, how much do you think you spend on mowing an area similar to this? We assumed something like four mowings, one inspection and one repair annually for fifty years and came up with a number, but that's where the, yeah, there are some assumptions to discuss there on, yeah. I, I'm not an expert on the time value of money, but here's what I do know and this is where we started.
Ray, could you just say like what that number might be? Because I don't know if you're talking five hundred dollars or five hundred thousand dollars.
Sure. Broken into unit costs, it was like a dollar fifty a square foot. And you're talking about the plan area of what a detention basin would have been, so imagine one of the Shadow Creek ponds, the square feet of that multiplied by a dollar fifty. So the mock, we have a mock calculator right now, just trying to see like, are these numbers absurd? And for, for example, a sixty-five thousand dollar fee in lieu, price tag has about eleven thousand dollars in long-term maintenance. And those, those all come back to unit, design units of either cubic yards of storage or square foot of land.
Compared, I would, I would add anecdotally, compared to the value of land per square foot and the way that those developers might be able to use that land in this case where they don't have to attribute it to detention. I would say in working with other communities that have implemented this, their biggest concern is fighting off every single developer that has some reason that they want to try and use the fee and lieu instead of building, developing detention on their space. People are begging for it essentially. And so we have built into this language that they have to come to the city with a reason as to why they feel that it's, like Ray said, floodplain adjacency. Maybe there's contaminated soils or something like that where you don't want to get into it. There might be other reasons, but initially I believe floodplain adjacency is the main thing. Not everybody can tap into this option.
So very limited scope early, but we can bring back estimates on what some of the maintenance costs or maintenance multiplier will be for typical detention. We're happy to come back to that.
I just see a scenario where, and I agree with you, they're all going to want to do fee and lose. They don't have to do the development, the stormwater retention process. It's just going to be a constant fight for every development.
I wouldn't think I would offer though, just in terms of kind of thinking of Clive's future. And as we look at redevelopment in existing neighborhoods, I think the floodplain area is definitely a start. I think you're going to have some situations potentially where the city might want to have that tool as an option to, for example, to maximize yield on a particular redevelopment parcel because the stormwater management might be a better fit in a less valuable parcel, particularly if you're thinking about density and building up. So again, it would be at the city's control, right? That's something that you all can maintain and then decide when the right time is for that. But just think about that going forward. We'll be able to test it out a little bit with the floodplain scenario, which again, has a, has an environmental physical challenge to do detention. But that might be a piece that we want to have as an option to make our redevelopment opportunities more flexible in the future. Yeah, I think there's still a lot of unknowns, but I think it's the right approach, right? So I think that's.
I think for context, and Amanda, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is like a small number of parcels. I think we came up with a number in the forties. So for a pilot of is this program workable? I, I think the, the number of parcels impacted is pretty small, so it seems right-sized for what we're trying to take on.
That is correct. We are talking with this unique piece to only be talking about this in lieu or this flexibility for truly the unique circumstances. These are properties that are within the floodplain, which again, we'll use Danard as an example. Is the fee and lieu in their packet, the actual?
There is, the language, yes, is in the calculation. Yep.
So your questions in terms of those, what is the cost? How is the maintenance calculated? That's all in your materials, for example. The fee in lieu is going to be more expensive than them building it on their property. That was a, a starting premise that we were not intending to be in the business of solving the developer's problem easily. The reason that we're proposing it and, and don't want to make it so high a cost that no one uses it is because truly there is a public benefit in not having a developer fill the floodplain. Right? They could comply and, and you'll see it on Danard's site plan. They could fill their property, then dig a hole to store the water that's being generated from their site. But the filling of the floodplain has a negative impact on everybody else. So that's really why this is a very limited consideration and it is measured against kind of that broader public benefit. Yes, it will be useful for managing or being involved in the real redevelopment game. But again, it's going to be a very limited number of properties with this proposal that will be able to take advantage of it. But again, the primary purpose here is to create better public stormwater management for the community. The developer is going to have to pay for it. They're going to pay a premium to do it this way. And again, I can't speak for every developer, but several that I have talked to about this, the idea that one, they can simplify their design. I can write a check instead of going through the city's headaches of plan review. Significant thumbs up. Significant thumbs up. The fact that now I can actually maybe reuse or or make the land more valuable instead of digging a hole or putting fill in. Thumbs up. Uh, the fact that I don't have to uh construct this complicated stormwater thing. Thumbs up. The idea that I don't have to maintain this complicated bio, whatever it is. Uh, two thumbs up. So that's a lot of thumbs up from the developer side of it, where they're going to have a willingness to pay the premium. And as we talk about that with the developer. Um. There has to be a premium in it because we have heard over and over again that we do not want to simply take on. These development or these these developers responsibilities. Uh, so in this particular case, uh, we were very conscious uh in terms of making sure that those costs. Um. Were very reasonable in today's light. And is inclusive of inflation and absolutely uh captures the. Present value of a fifty-year maintenance regime. So I think that we've hit a lot of the concerns. Uh, in terms of the way of of coming up with the dollar amount. That is both fair for us, provides the public benefit and gives the developer a little more flexibility.
Thanks, Doug. Okay, for just about.
Yep, almost up.
Almost up.
And by the way, I might use your term uh bio whatever going forward. I enjoyed yours out front. It's beautiful looking.
I wanted to say ditch.
Be. Uh, so one last quick point on this, um, in the same vein, but not nearly as exciting. Um, similar to fee and lieu, uh, there are redevelopment cases, especially small parcels where. Uh, we might encourage a more regional approach. It's kind of a similar sort of a thing. Uh, it's a lot easier to maintain and institute a single larger practice for multiple uh development sites than a whole bunch of little tiny ones. Um, there's, you know, just a few caveats. Obviously, ownership and maintenance going forward have to be well understood. Um, but we wanted to add a little bit more flexibility so that um any of these cases where this might fit. Um, have uh some other options that were necessarily clearly articulated previously. And. Uh, almost the same exact uh vein, um, besides just uh the size of the parcel. There might be other instances where um regional practices fit better. Think of, you know, a stormwater pond for an entire residential development. You don't want individual little ponds on every house parcel. Um, same sort of thing. Uh, and then as well, provide a little bit of flexibility. For including uh public-private partnerships to, for instance, uh, treat street runoff. Um, and this is something that as well, other communities have started to institute more and more. When you have planned long-term development and you know all the various things that are going to be happening. Um, if you can treat both together, then um it 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 works together nicely. Because, you know, then the city is sort of walking the walk as well. Um, yeah. Obviously, a lot of these things are kind of a case-by-case basis, and there's a little bit of discussion involved to make it fit properly. Uh, but we wanted to add the flexibility um to to do this, have that discussion uh as in almost being planned. And then last but not least, we also wanted to include a caveat that if, for whatever reason. Development designers wanted to use the previous uh pre SF four fifty-five methods for detention calculation or topsoil. They certainly could. Um, the other communities around here that did that as well, as long as you have a provision that is compliant with SF four fifty-five. If for some reason they acknowledge that, but they want to use the old methods, um, we included that uh as well, just for their flexibility. And with that, we basically come down to the summary questions, uh, asking for your input on these various approaches.
This slide is just kind of covering here some of those questions that came up in over the course of the presentation. We've got some good direction, I think, already on the uh. Some things we need to do and touch base with the HPA, see what they think about this, get some clarity on the. In lieu of calculation and that make future maintenance multiplier as well. Are there any other questions that folks have specifically right now about any of these policy proposals?
So. Why the twenty-five percent? Why not the twenty-eight percent for? I mean, the twenty to forty-five, we're not even in the middle of that. So what was the rationale behind twenty-five percent?
I think a couple of different things. Um. One was, we heard what you said, don't make it more onerous than what it was before. And so we wanted to balance that with also the know- knowledge that you got a bigger risk coming at us. So it's holding those two things at the same time and honoring the direction the council gave us at the beginning of the project.
We looked at a bunch of different numbers, uh, and we had, uh, we had all these different metrics, other communities doing other things. We looked at just different ways to dice this up and we had a call. And I think it was Doug that said, I don't know, how about twenty-five percent?
Everybody says that.
And we ran the models and lo and behold, it came out very similar to what it was before. And as always, Doug was right, so. Arbitrarily, we could make it whatever. Um, but I think there's a sound basis in the data. And all of the various projections um that that had somewhere in the mid twenties and it's a round number, so that's it.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one. For the percentage. Does it factor in changes from future development? Does it come less over the years? Where does that twenty-five percent fall?
That is a great question. Not necessarily, uh, because the the projections are all over the place. We certainly looked at the historical changes that have been observed. Um, except for the EPA document, fifty years of progression and the changes that we see coming. Uh, and then obviously, you know, you've seen Al Gore's hockey stick graph where the projections start to kind of fan out. And we didn't want to get too far into speculative because, you know, that uh brings up, you know, debate and. Uh, and so we're kind of shooting in the middle, essentially. Um, some of the numbers and the metrics we had were lower in the low twenties, some were in the higher twenties. And so we kind of shot in the middle. Um, it certainly could be adjusted over time if needed. Um, that's your prerogative. Um, we basically just looked at the numbers and how it pans out. And then, as Pete said, looked at how how's the development community going to see this? And it seems fair to say that this is not a substantial change from what you've been seeing. And the volumes that you are expect, were expected previously to build. And so, um, it seems fair, essentially.
To Susan's point, sorry, to Susan's point, though, of modeling, I think it's what you were getting at, of modeling future development. If we're going to model future rainfall by the data of the past fifty years plus the flip of the coin. And why, why wouldn't you model future development inside this model to get what the? The number needs to be in ten, fifteen, twenty years.
So let me, I think with actually, we have done that, and I go back to that silver jacket study. So we, Doug, yeah, rein me in here a little bit.
Not sure I'm going to rein you in, but what I'm going to say is. The amount of impervious surface is, I I think that's kind of what I'm hearing is what is the impact of development in all of this? Nothing. With what we're talking about. Right? Uh, the shopping center that's built on University, it's eighty percent parking and building. Really has nothing to do with the rainfall that's happening out of the Silver Star. So development itself isn't necessarily changing how much rain is coming down. Broadly speaking, you know, in terms of climate change prediction. All of that impervious surface area may be having some level of impact. But that's kind of why there are. Varying ranges of prediction of what the climate change is going to be, right? And that's kind of why, you know, again. You're taking very large data sets across the globe and trying to bring it down to Little Clive, Iowa. Um, and trying to make the best of it that you can of the data. That's why it's a range of predictions and we've simply picked twenty-five is our best guess. At how much more rain we're going to get over the next whatever period of time. The whatever period of time, you might come back and say, you know what? Now we've got ten more years of data. Twenty-five is not right. It's twenty-eight or thirty or whatever it is. Uh, but this is our best guess with the data that we have in our in our available toolbox. Um, the development part of it, you know, that was. An issue from the Home Builders Association of saying. You're trying to use stormwater management as a way of fixing the sins of the old. Of the things that are in place. You're making new development do more because the old development didn't do its job.
Um. I'm asking because I think we need to be prepared for what new development is going to do. So that's where I just wonder, here's a piece of it with twenty-five percent additional rainfall. And there is good backing or using that number. I just want to make sure we're calculating that future development too, so it doesn't just seem like.
If the impacts of the future development are really about the output. Uh, you know, it's, it's again, ultimately, we're trying to reduce flooding broadly speaking. It's the quantity of water coming down in our narrow valley. Uh. That's why we're trying to do appropriate stormwater management. In new development or in the case of a redevelopment that maybe didn't have very good stormwater management. Want to make sure that we're getting at least something accomplished on these sites. To try and reconcile that flooding problem that we have. Um, so, so yes, in the broad scheme of things, the entirety of the watershed being converted into suburbia. Um, is definitely reconciled in the thought process. But again, um, the amount of rainfall that we're expecting in the future. Is really unrelated to the amount of development that's occurring. It is, again, this scientific guess. Of how much water is going to drop out of the clouds in the future.
And that was incorporated into the silver jacket studies that were done. It was presuming some of that future development and.
But, right, but but again, I I that's the part I'm just, they're two separate things. Right? The silver jackets is saying we can build out our watershed, fill Walnut Creek with suburbia. Hard impervious surfaces. And what is that impact down on Clive at the bottom of the watershed? We know what that is. We've, we've, we've got that calculated. I was then also curious, once we got that answer. Let's take a look at what this climate change stuff is. And see what might be. The worst-case scenario for the city of Clive with the entire watershed built out. And now the rain clouds dropping more rain on us. Uh, to see how bad, bad might be down on University Boulevard. Uh, so yes, that's what the Silver Jackets project did. It did not have much to do with stormwater management on individual sites. We just simply used the science that the Army Corps of Engineers used. To try and guess what that rainfall, that extra rainfall in the future might be. Took that data, which again is reasonable. Scientific climate change analysis. And then brought it over into now stormwater management for these individual sites. So there's a relationship, but they're not the same.
Great.
Any other questions? Very good. Thank you very much.
I have our to-dos. We'll be back to the council, hopefully, in the next week or the one day after.
Thank you. Absolutely.
The chief is anxious to come up and tell us about CIT.
Can't wait. Mayor Council, thank you. I'll keep this brief. Uh, we've talked about this before, so. Um, crisis intervention to you, just for a little historical perspective. Since council member Hoppers knew this was started in twenty twenty-three, it was a partnership. Uh, paired a police officer with a mental health provider who are ASO or Area Service Organization provided to us. In twenty twenty-three, that ASO was Heart of Iowa, Heart of Iowa Region, which is based in Dallas County. Uh, because half our cities in Dallas County, we got to take part in. So that is how the program started. We entered into a twenty eighty agreement with Heart of Iowa and with Inside Out Wellness. They provide the mental health professional and the the team was started. Um, the twenty eighty agreement went through. Uh, July of twenty twenty-sixth, essentially. But in twenty twenty-four, there was a realignment of regions throughout the state. Uh, we got put into a bigger. Uh, geographic region in the center of the state of Iowa with about fifteen counties as compared to the three that we were with. Um, and the Area Service Organization, Heart of Iowa, was no longer going to be our ASO, so the the state. Uh, came up with a new ASO, Iowa Primary Care Association. They cover the whole state. They cover the funding for all of these seven hundred odd programs that were statewide. With them taking over the program, they were tasked at looking at which programs they wanted to continue on with. So one of the issues the council knows that we dealt with, dealt with was the funding issue. Uh, we did not know what was going to happen as far back as July of twenty twenty-four. Uh, there were a lot of questions as to what was going to go on with that. The council granted us approval to continue on with the program, uh, just kind of a status quo. Keeping things in place, hoping to see what would happen with the new ASO that had come on board. Uh, it was a lot of questions and a lot of meetings and a lot of waiting. Uh, again, this started in. July of of twenty twenty-four. I know during budget time in February is when we talked about it and and talked about the options that we had. But moving forward from then, it was July, I'm sorry, June sixteenth of this year, when I finally received a contract in the mail for. Or in my email from our new ASO from Iowa Primary Care. Uh, it's quite a bit different than the contract that we had. It does not provide as much funding as what we had. Uh, but it does give us an opportunity to continue the program for another year. And then some options beyond that that we could look at into the future. Um, the the program right now. Or the funding that we have right now or that was in place was to pay for a police officer, that that side of the team. Plus all of their benefits have provided us a vehicle and some equipment. Uh, the funding levels that we're looking at now are are not quite as high as what we had had with Heart of Iowa. Uh, and what we see in the contract and and hopefully what you will see once we can get you a copy of that. Is that the funding has drawdowns over the next several years. So that's an issue that we are going to have to look at as far as finding additional funding sources, looking for grants. Uh, partnering with some private businesses. Clive Behavioral Health, for example, is is somebody that we're going to be talking to and seeing if there's ways that we can make up this difference. Uh, but essentially what I, what we're here tonight asking is that we can continue the program and that. Once we get the contract sorted out, there's a little bit of language that legal counsel has. Uh, given us some direction on that needs to be changed. Uh, but once that's taken care, we would like to proceed forward for the next, with with your blessing for the next year. And look into, that would give us an opportunity to get to gather more data, but it would give us an opportunity to look for more of these. Funding avenues that we're going to need to continue the program. What I can tell you is, in the first year of the the contract, if if it is approved and it's signed. Uh, the ASO is providing us a hundred and twenty thousand dollars funding for the police officer side of the program. They will also fund the other side through Inside Out, which is the mental health provider that we have right now, so that the the team would not change. Uh, the funding would, it is, it's dropped down a little bit from what we had. Um. But we've talked about city manager and I've talked about it, and I think there's some ways that we can make that difference up. Uh, with the time that we would then have over the next four to six months, we can look for those other avenues for additional funding. So that we can make up these differences or or look for ways to make up the differences in the coming years. There may be a potential as well, if we cannot find those avenues, those other funding sources. There may be the potential for us to take that money and redesignate it and partner with another agency. And do a a shared co-responder program with another another city, another police department. So those are some of the things that we are looking at. Uh, we are not the only ones that got a contract. I can tell you, Urbendale had one. Uh, we are not the only ones that got a contract. I can tell you, Urbendale had one that was mailed to, or emailed to them and they denied the contract. They don't want it. They are taking their program in-house. Uh, Waki received the contract. Their initial year of funding is a hundred and six thousand dollars and with the, the drawdowns year, over year after that. And, uh, Pella received a contract for ninety-ish thousand dollars with the same drawdowns. So of the three, the four cities that received these contracts, we, we did get the highest amount of funding, so that's a good thing. Pella and Waki are, are approving their contracts. They're going to go forward with them and, and they've got apparently fun, funding there to make up those differences, but that's essentially what we're looking at here tonight is approval from you. And once we can get approval of the contract to move forward for the next year with the understanding that I'll be looking for additional sources of this funding. Uh, and if, if we can't do that, then there's maybe some room for negotiation of the contract back with the ASO, but that's just kind of yet to be seen. So again, that's, that's the down and dirty version of it with a little bit of history thrown in for good measure. No, no stormwater, unfortunately, but uh, I would welcome any questions that you would have for me.
To the chief's comments too, is there is, you know, an exit clause provision in the, these contracts, so if we get to a point where, um, those other funding elements, um, aren't able to be secured to continue the program a hundred percent, you know, outside funding, um, there's an exit clause. Uh, we don't have to go through all five years, right? There's, there's provisions to, to get out of the contract. Um, and in addition, if they're not willing to let us share, you know, with another agency, for example, if that's some, that's something that we still need to talk through with them. And I, you know, as the chief and I talked about this too, is, uh, we talked about that in February, is this provides at least another year, um, for the chief to continue. I know he included some data in his memo of what we've seen with the program, but this gives us another year, um, to really continue to test out the effectiveness of this is, you know, having a a different tool in our toolbox in terms of law enforcement and having a different way to do it, uh, which I know is what attracted us to this program in the first place. So we, we relatively buy that additional year. Uh, the really, the difference in the funding level between Heart of Iowa and this, the hundred and fifty to a hundred and twenty is they were, they were providing funding for a police officer at the tenure of the person who was doing the CIT program. We backfilled it with a brand new officer, uh, which actually is the new funding level of a hundred and twenty thousand. Roughly covers, you know, a, a relatively new in their career police officer, which still covers that additional expense in the city uh, when the program started. So again, we feel comfortable for the next twelve months and then have some light work to do. But either on other outside funding opportunities, other partnerships, uh, or if we determine that the program isn't, you know, meeting the needs, um, at least we feel like it is at this point, but we'd like to get more data to present back to you in a year. Or less than a year, I should say.
So, uh, chief, um, I mean, I'm, I'm a big supporter of this program. I think all of us are. Um, you know, my, my disappointment, and it is when, when they moved the mental health professional away from us. And then, so we had a pretty good period of time there where we really didn't get any value out of this, even though, and, and so so I guess my question to you is, is there anything that we can bake into the contract that if they do that again, the funding gets extended? So if we lose a mental health professional for three months, that funding gets extended by three months instead of just having it for a period of time where it's, we're getting no value out of that, that funding. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I, so one of the things that, that we did was try to negotiate the contract. We tried to negotiate terms. We tried to negotiate how the money would be dispersed out and we got a resounding no from them. They were not interested in doing that. The, the mental health provider that would be our partner, that is still our partner is also under contract through Iowa Primary Care and they have their own separate contracts separate from us. So the contract that we now have in front of us is just for the police officer side. Um, I know what you're talking about with the, the staffing issues that we had and, and the staffing issues that Inside Out had. That was a big problem for us. I think we really got a good look at what the program can do, starting September, end of September, twenty twenty-four up through now. If you look at what we had been able to do prior to that and then look at the consistency that we have from September up there now. We, we did. We did lose about a year. Uh, so, and, uh, the, the funding was essentially still there. I mean, it's we, we had to adjust that a little bit, but, um, I, I don't know that there's going to be room to, to negotiate anything else into this contract.
Chief, real quick, we talked a little bit about Waki and, and some other cities that renewed their contracts. Why did Urbendale say no and want to do it in-house? What's the rationale behind that? Any idea on that?
They just want control of the program and they want to keep it all in-house. I, it, if you can afford to do it, I think it's the way to do it because you have everybody there in your own building right now and you don't have these other outside agencies, outside, yeah, outside people that want to try to get their hands in on what you're doing. I, I, yeah, that was their reason for it.
In that case, they're hiring the mental health professional as a city of Urbendale staffers.
And, and they had the same issues that we had as far as staffing and getting a mental health professional as well. So it's, we've all had the same issues. West Des Moines is going away from the program completely because they don't have the bodies to staff them at all.
I think we, we all agree that it's a, you know, mental health is very important and I think the program's been successful. You know, if we got to buy ourselves a year, that's, that's what we got to do, uh, in, in my opinion. Um, I do like the, the thought of public-private partnerships with us. We've got, got opportunities there and I agree, it gives, uh, gives us some breathing room to see if we can develop those to help to augment this process right here. You know, they've got it. Clive Behavioral Health has, has a stake in this too.
Yes.
Uh, so I, I think they need to step up the table and, and be a partner in this.
It was my concern when I first came.
I, I remember, I remember we talked about.
Cloak and dagger, and here we are, exactly where I, you know, feared to be. And, you know, it's once you put something into a factor, I said it, how do you pull it? Right? Because if this council says no tonight, that means you lose an officer. Right?
At some point.
Yeah. And so this is, I, I, I'm slowly supportive of the program. I just.
The, the way it happened, I don't think anybody expected that. I, that, that the state would come in and totally upend everything, mental health wise.
It's anything, right? When it comes to temporary funding for permanent people's jobs, it's a scary thing for me to do. And it was why I said I was scared that at that time to say, I'm going to put temporary funding behind somebody's livelihood. And it's now somebody's livelihood that's on the line if, if the delta can't be made from the city and that delta is going to get bigger. So I think this discussion this time is, are we in it for the long haul regardless of what it costs? Five years or ten years or whatever? You can't, there, you look at me that way, but you can't keep kicking the can and saying, this is going to go one year, going to go two years, going to go three years. If we're in, we're in. And so you got to find the funding for it. But if you're going to say, we knew it was happening because the funding is going to be zero in five years, that's what you have to assume. Right?
That's what the contract says.
Okay, so I'm seeing it, but that would be, makes sense, right?
Yes.
So zero, so this, this city has to be ready to say in five years because we're not going to fire somebody. I know that, because we're here today, we're not. But that's, uh, to me, that's where we have to say, is this a program forever? So now I see why Urbendale did it. So you get a hundred and twenty thousand. This isn't a judgment on you, right? Or anything it does, but you get a hundred and twenty thousand, next year sixty, that's a hundred and eighty thousand, whatever. I don't see the contract, but what's the total net? Total amount, three hundred grand over five years?
Five hundred.
Five hundred grand over five. So five hundred grand. Would that start your own program?
Yep, absolutely would.
And, and be sustainable.
Our question tonight is.
I'm not ready to answer the question.
I think that's, well, that's a strategic planning.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point.
That's a much bigger discussion I think we need to, we need to have.
I'm behind it. I'm behind you, but what I don't want to do is put somebody's livelihood on the line.
No, I, I understand.
Figure out how to fund this person for five, ten, twenty years and say this is something we're behind instead of saying, let's roll the dice try to raise the money in a cooking sale and see if we can get this person's job every year, right?
Again, I think the direction the chief is looking for is they got the money lined up for the next year. Is it okay to continue? Well, the chief look at funding sources and so forth over the next year. But there's.
There's a, there is an opt-out clause. If we want to get out, we can, we can get out of this. So it's a hundred and eighty day opt-out. We would have about a five, I have, if, if it's approved by the end of this month, for example, I would have a five-month period to find funding to add on to the next year.
I think that's the point of what I'm making. Compared to the opt-out, if we're all in, I think for five years, we're out of happiness or they put in half, we put in the rest, whatever.
It's a thirty thousand per year step down.
We put in the rest. I think we need to make a decision on this decision because you're going to go a year and you're going to go for six months again and say, are we even funding? Maybe we can't complain this game, someone's job. Or the mental health system, right?
Again, the question I'm asking is, are we okay with doing this for a year? We'll talk about it more at strategic plan. Seems like you would have a consensus.
I'm okay with that.
Is everybody good with that? You're frozen. I can't reach. Well, I'm counting at least four votes in favor to continue for a year. Although we're not taking four votes, but at least four nots. So I think that's where we are.
Okay. We just, we just need to get the language finalized and we'll have that for the next, next meeting.
Then you can vote formally.
Well, no, no, I think before this thing comes to us on a formal basis, these questions need to be secure, right?
With the opt-out, I feel like we have the flexibility where we could let the chief do what he needs to do to figure out, at, at least for the short term. And then we as a group can decide, is, you're right, are we all in on this long-term? And I agree with your, your line of thinking. I think we can do both.
I've definitely heard the value.
I, I do too.
Like what you're saying, I would be committed to in the current day for the future.
I understand the concerns and I remember the initial conversation too, and it's, 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 it's come out this way. I mean, it's, you know, we're making the best of a, of a poor situation is really what we're doing, buying ourselves some time with this. We're looking at our options and our priorities and, and right now, I, I, I think it's the best course of action.
I think we have, uh, direction. So I think we'll let you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So it, it does have a lot of benefit far beyond just the mental health side. So appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Um, in this line, and I don't need to tie you to these dollars you go here and there. They're, they're, you know, you can only spend your dollars so much. Is it true that we, when we use our, our dog, that we find whatever? Uh, and this is to this long-term problem is we find cash and drugs and weapons. Some of that we can, we can take, right?
Forfeit it, some of it does.
So we get percentage.
Yes.
The cash. So when we go to Urbendale or Waki or wherever, that city, I'm hearing we don't get that. So it's our dog, our, our officer doing the search in a car that then that city gets, doesn't make sense. And what I'm saying is if you can get more of that, you can fund more of this.
Right. Uh, it depends on, so the short answer is it depends on who's taking the case. If it's a mine task force case, drug task force comes out and adopts it, all that money that's forfeited goes to the mine task force in the state. Uh, we get some of that back yearly. We just got a ten thousand dollar disbursement of forfeited money that came back to Clive. So we do get some of that back that way. Now we have equitable sharing agreements with federal government. So any forfeitures that are, that occur through them, uh, postal service package sniff, for example, where there's cash, there's the potential that some of that's coming back to the city of Clive too. It's a pretty lengthy process.
What about other cities though?
I, I, I'm not aware of any, of any large seizures that we've made where we, I mean, we would probably ask for some of it. Uh, but I'm not aware of any big seizures. Nothing, and, and that's all, I mean, who get, what gets seized and where it goes is, that's a, that's a long conversation, but. Yeah.
Thanks again, chief. Ollie, are you ready yet?
Evening everyone. I was just checking the weather report. I think it's still clear right now. I know we're expecting some rain tonight. All right. Oh, excellent. Thank you. Perfect. All right. Well, good evening there and council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Um, and to give us a chance to share some of our communications highlights, um, on the stories and projects that Pete and I have been working on these last six months. Um, the original report, uh, for the six-month time period is about thirty-plus pages, but I will give you the abridged version tonight. But we'll talk about, uh, some of the stories, um, our website content, um, media coverage, future projects and more. Uh, so this will be, uh, hopefully brief, but I, sometimes I get really excited about these topics and I can rant. So I practice to keep this as concise as possible. All right. So. All right. Uh, just to give you a kind of a glimpse of what we focused on these last six months, uh, from the storytelling point of view, we kicked off the year with our city budget, um, stories and value added to taxpayers. So uh, we created a variety of materials, um, for the website, social media and print. Um, many of you are familiar with the budget report. Uh, the goal of that was to put that information in infographics, um, just to help make that information more accessible to the public. Um, the next piece, um, you'll see a picture, a snapshot of our West Des Moines community school district and Clive quarterly newsletter, um, that was sent out this last May. And, um, that's part of the partnership that we have with the school district, um, to really reach out to the Crestview and Indian Hillswood school neighborhoods. Um, it's a great partnership because we can focus on, on a lot of city projects such as Lenan Park. So this is kind of the snapshot here. But also, um, other things happening within the schools as well. So it's a really good opportunity for us to connect with the community. Uh, the next piece that I have, um, we just talked about Lenan Park and that was a big story that we had with the groundbreaking last week. Uh, but moving on to another big part is Greenie, uh, our tech service and chat bot. Um, so we have, uh, we kicked that off at the end of the year. I actually have more information about that. Um, but that's been a big story, uh, for us, especially as we get into weather alerts. Um, we started bringing off, um, as giving alerts for winter weather ordinances. And we actually just sent one out earlier today about the possible flash flood warning. Not warning, but, uh, conditions, uh, under the weather forecast right now. Um, so speaking of water, um, we also have the story of the Central Iowa Water Works and the lawn watering ban and the efforts to protect the water supply. Um, that's been a big piece for us and luckily Central Iowa Water Works has been, uh, doing a great job of keeping us connected with the communications that they're sending out. Um, in addition to that, we've had a lot of communication, I mean, a lot of communication surrounding construction projects. We've used Greenie to send those communications out, uh, but we've also used our website as well. Um, and finally, to wrap up the last six months, we had a big push for fireworks safety. Um, and from my understanding, we didn't get a lot of calls, um, about fireworks. So that's a good sign, um, that we pushed the right information out. Um, but that's just a quick snapshot of what we covered. Um, I know this is just on the surface. But that's part of what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. Another piece, um, that we've been working on is building our training program for other departments at, um, at the city. Uh, we are starting a kind of set of commu-, uh, training modules, um, to help boost the communication capabilities of each department uh, and help streamline those communications. One way we've done that is by creating the communications policy and the training guide. Um, but we want to take that a step further by, um, doing in-person communications training, which I've already started. So the first three topics on introduction to AI, um, plain language and graphic design basics. Um, those are all training modules that I've already led trainings on. Um, and we also have more topics, uh, surrounding social media strategies, photo and video basics and event marketing to help, uh, some of our other departments, um, like leisure services, uh, with their day-to-day tasks. And these trainings will be in person, but, uh, the nice thing about them is that they'll offer a chance for me to get feedback from each department as well so that I can learn from them, um, and get, uh, kind of an idea of their communications needs, uh, for me to maybe even develop more training opportunities from there as well. All right. And Greenie, uh, Greenie is the greatest goat, uh, that we have. Um, so it's our I know, I know. Steve was the most memorable one. Yes, yes. Um, but Greenie has left quite an impression. Steve was the most memorable one. Yes, yes. Um, but Greenie has left quite an impression, uh, as our virtual assistant and AI-powered chat bot. Um, we launched this in December of twenty-four and, uh, I have a quarterly dashboard on the next slide. Um, but these bullet points are just some of the highlights from Greenie. Um, so total number of people who've been reached by this service, uh, two thousand three hundred thirty-two. In a matter of, you know, less than six months, that's a, a pretty good number and it offers us a chance to grow. Uh, we also sent out fifty-one text alerts as a city. Um, as I mentioned, we sent one out earlier today. Um, these can be, you know, based on the subscription topics that people opt into. Um, you can get weather, you know, winter weather ordinances and emergency preparedness. And we can also even, uh, also get road closure updates and more. Um, so that's just kind of an idea of how we're using it. Um.
How many folks do we have enrolled in that?
Um, it's on the next slide. I think it's five twenty-six. Um, let me just pop over. No, twenty-five, twenty-four. And, um, so our goal is to reach one thousand by the end of the year. Um, and I think with, um, weather events happening, especially with fall and winter coming up. It is a good way to kind of push, um, you know, promote enrollment, um, and opt-ins into this program. And if, in my experience, uh, weather events tend to bring a lot of attention to your organization. So I think that's, um, an opportunity there. June was a, a phenomenal month for us with engagement, um, because you know, with any introductory, um, you know, product or in the, in, uh, in the initial months, what I mean to say. So it was kind of a slow and steady start, but we saw a big boost in, uh, June, uh, probably for a variety of reasons. We have the, uh, Cloud Aquatic Center. We had the lawn watering ban. We had other events come up. Um, so that's why we think there's a boost there as well. And since December of twenty twenty-four, there have, uh, there's been a total of three thousand one hundred fifteen engagements, either through the chat bot or the tech service. And here is our dashboard to kind of show the breakdown a little bit more. So this is the quarterly dashboard. This is from May to June. Well, yeah, April to June. And, um, you'll see the total engage, uh, total red residents engaged, um, and total communications. You'll see June, there's just a substantial increase from there. And it's just kind of a good way to show us that we're getting more traffic. Um, there have been some slow and steady months early in the spring, but it's starting to pick up. Uh, you'll see on total communications that most of our users are using the web chat, um, at seventy-four percent and the text service at twenty-six percent. Um, which is expected, um, because most people will surf our website and the Greenie icon just pops up. Whereas with texts, you have to have the number kind of logged into your phone and you just manually text, manually text, um, questions as they come. Um, overall, it comes into that three thousand one hundred fifteen engagements. Um, alert signups, five hundred twenty-four. Um, most popular topics. Once again, this is from April to June. So we have the aquatic center, uh, the lawn watering ban, spring cleanup, uh, the utility bell, uh, bill and, um, Clive festival questions. So this is a really good way for me to check the data in real time, um, especially with, um, the lawn watering ban. I was able to kind of log into our dashboard and see how often people were asking about the lawn watering ban. Um, surprisingly, we didn't get a lot of fireworks questions. We had a few amount, a, a few come through. Um, but it's a good way to gauge those popular topics coming in. Any questions about Greenie?
Does Greenie go to a live agent after and can't answer yet? Is he there or, or just?
It doesn't generate a phone call. It'd say, it will direct you to email us if it gets confused. Um, so that's how we're getting some inquiries at this point.
Definitely.
But we haven't since seen a lot of hallucination yet of Greenie and, or Greenie trying to step further than she knows where to go.
Localize on the website. That's what Greenies learn.
That's all it crawls.
Yeah.
Which gives us a real powerful tool for keeping it current.
Sure.
So we can call up City Bot at any point and say, we've got this new lawn watering ban that went into effect. A story up there and then say crawl it right now. So that when people go use Greenie, then Greenie is able to see that most recent information.
Since you mentioned, uh, um, notice coming out today, I went to look at mine and I haven't had anything since March. So I don't know if I had marked all the categories or something, but have you heard of people getting dropped off?
Um, no, uh, not from specific subscription lists.
So, um, we did have an issue that came up earlier this June in this, uh, that we had worked through with their technicians where we didn't know if people were who had opted in and were still on list actually can did get a push, uh, noted in a text. So we had to work through that technical glitch with them. Uh, but we'll go back and double check what your subscribe or councilwoman said.
I just wanted to mark them all again. So we'll turn it on now.
We appreciate that.
Oh, absolutely.
I think it's in again for one.
I got it.
Okay. Yes, we're, we're happy to, to help you navigate Greenie. Um, uh, so, yeah.
Well, I had all that and then that's it.
All right. Uh, any other Greenie questions? All right. Excellent. Um, so as we mentioned with the website, um, Greenie is great harnessing the information on our website. And, uh, from our twenty twenty-four survey, residents indicated they rely heavily on the website. Um, this is just a snapshot of, um, the, you know, we- website data that I look at every month, but this is just shows us how much traffic we get to the main website. And we'll also look at the library and parks and rec websites. Um, as you can tell, we have about over eight thousand, uh, regular returning users over a period of six months. Um, and this is also a great way to look at the breakdown of mobile devices versus desktop and how people are using the site. Um, this, I would say, um, it's really interesting for the Parks and Rec side because their device breakdown is significantly different. But before we move on to that, um, our website analytics show that most people are going to the Clive careers page, uh, the major plans and project page. Um, and also the utility bill, um, information pages. So it just gives us an idea of how users are interacting with our site and how we can best keep our information current and usable to them.
The jig jag that you see on the line, work week, weekend, week, weekend. I think we're engaging with more during the weekdays than they are weekends. The other thing to note there is that split between mobile and desktop. When we had the old site and even when we first launched this site, the city version, the city of Clive dot com, not the parks, not library, was shift, was, uh, tilted more still to the desktop. Now you can see that that tilt has moved toward both. Just, just a trend that's going to keep continuing. This, these are now overwhelmingly the way that people are, are engaged. You'll see that here on our next two slides about the library and the rec.
And here's our Parks and Rec site. You can tell that mobile usage is a lot higher. Um, and, uh, as you can see, the top page is visited, uh, with Parks and Rec calendar. Um, with the Cloud Aquatic Center and Harbach Center, uh, you probably get a lot of information about programs as well. Um, so my guess, Pete, is that, um, most people are using the mobile version to sign up and register.
Sign up, register and all things aquatics. When you take the numbers here that you're about to see for Parks and Rec and library and compare that to the city site. It's amazing to see how much higher that engagements are, are the total number of these gates are happening on library and parks. It's in so many ways. Maybe not the first thing that we think of with folks Clive's front door, but it is, especially in the summertime, Clive's front door. This is where we are creating so many impressions, doing so much reputation work, doing so much trust building work through those teams. And, uh, they deserve credit for it because I think especially in these busy programming lots, they are the ones who are, uh, not only creating these, well, called light touches in the digital spaces, but those really heavy, high-quality touches when they're actually big person-to-person with everybody out there in the community.
Absolutely. And, um, the nice thing about this, uh, information here, you can definitely see the seasonal change as well as things ramp up for the summertime. But yes, the Parks and Rec is definitely the one that really stands out with interesting analytics. Now the library website is a little bit more consistent. And if you go back to the device split, um, it is back to mobile and desktops similar to the city of Clive webpage. And once again, you can see on the library site, it's mostly their calendar and their programs, um, that people visit the most. And it just helps us realize how people are using the site. Any questions about the websites? All right. The next part of the communications puzzle, uh, is media coverage. And, uh, these last few months, um, we have, uh, done a lot of work to help, uh, get more earned media. Um, I, I'd say one of the, you know, um, well, one of the first stories that, not first stories, but one story that came out, uh, with our partnership with West Des Moines, uh, community schools is their end of year goat attendance party where we actually had our Plaid Goats visit and it's part of the reward to, um, to, uh, yeah, reward the students for excellent attendance record at the school. Of course, you know, it ties the goats back to us and it's just a great way to connect with the community there. Um, other, uh, news stories include the lifeguard, uh, saving a child at the aquatic center. Uh, the police department also gained a lot of traction with their emergency awareness stickers. Um, those are very popular. Uh, we've received a lot of feedback on social media as well. Um, I think at least two news stories out of that. Uh, we also, uh, well, recently, this last month, uh, with the flash flooding, it was two weeks ago, um, along the trails, uh, some, uh, news agencies contacted us and there's one that, um, gave us an opportunity, gave Pete an opportunity to talk about the flood mitigation plan. Um, just to tying into that story of, you know, yes, we had flash flooding that just closed the trails, but this is how Clive is prepared in the event of a larger flooding event. Um, and additionally, uh, Clive has been mentioned in, with the lawn watering ban. It's received a lot of media attention. Um, and what's interesting to see about this new story is that it still has a lot of momentum, um, on how, uh, Central Iowa Water Works members are, you know, encouraging their communities to protect the water supply. Um, so those were the, the big stories that we had in these last, uh, well, mostly three months that I pulled from, um, but just something to think of, uh, moving forward. And that, uh, brings us to kind of upcoming topics that we have upcoming stories and projects that we have. Up this fall, we have the election coming up. Uh, we also have strategic priorities. Uh, one big project that we're looking at, um, is the newsletter. Um, our current newsletter, the print newsletter is perfect as is, we'll keep it as is, but we also have the question of the electronic version. Um, as we, uh, transition to a new, um, billing vendor, um, Swift, correct? Uh, we'll have to, uh, provide the electronic newsletter in a different version. And sometimes an electronic PDF isn't the most accessible. So there are other accessible means of getting that information out there and we're kind of looking at our options. Um, another project that we're kind of looking at at the horizon, um.
Just some dessert. This one needs a question mark next because we're going to talk about it in strategic planning.
Yes, a big question mark, but, um, a website refresh. And going back to the resident survey, um, residents, um, indicating that they rely heavily on the website, uh, to get their information about Clive. Um, it is, it just reinforces the need to look at our website and our options of refreshing it to make it, um, better and easier to navigate. Uh, especially when we have tools like Greenie. Um, Greenie is only as good as our website. And, um, the website refresh would give us an opportunity to, um, ensure our website meets ADA compliance and, um, is, you know, easy to use for our audience.
Twenty nineteen.
Thinking it's pretty recent.
That's what I thought too. I thought it was just like a, a couple of years.
But I've been disappointed in it, so.
So, um, what I've read is sort of it is standard that it, the use has changed, that you've got about five years of life in a website. And the good news about our refresh is that it would be, if we decide to stay with revised, free.
Well, and, and with that, with the website data as well, when we look at mobile versus desktop use, we can definitely use those, um, into consideration when we design, uh, the website. Um, so one thing that, you know, whenever, you know, we've create a page, we always check to make sure it looks good in a mobile format. Um, so finding something that will work across many platforms and make it easy to use.
Like my grand, like my father-in-law, father-in-law says, no cost incurred, no expense spared, right? For a free project like that. Just on time.
Oh, yeah. Excellent. But, um, but the website, uh, once again, it's a, a really important tool that we have and we can, there's an opportunity to make it better if we cross that road. Um, so going on to other projects and stories, we have a back-to-school community event on August eighth. Uh, we're ramping up our communications on that. Uh, we also have ongoing construction projects, um, and a lot of announcements of when things reopen or, um, temporarily closed for renovations. Uh, we also have, um, trail etiquette is a big one that we get a lot of, um, just general citizen inquiries about. And we're looking to create some content, um, that way. And hopefully, um, we'll be able to share the trail opening at the IAD Hickman Bridge once that's available. Um, other stories include ongoing Greenie adoption. We have, uh, quite a bit of ground to cover when getting more citizens, um, opted into the text alert service. Um, and other items that we're looking at, um, just stories around the impacts of federal, uh, federal leg- legislation and other actions, including, um, FEMA. And then finally, um, a, a really good story that we can share, uh, with the Des Moines Metro community is the apparatus sharing with the Urbandale Fire Department. And we're going to come on that.
Yep. That theme around value for taxes paid. That was our core during the budget storytelling. I expect it will be in with your direction next year. This now, like this building we're sitting in right now, becomes a chance to show taxpayers in Clive who walk the walk.
You know, while you, while you're talking about that theme of apparatus sharing, I think, I think that the maintenance agreements that we have would, would fall in line with, with that, uh, and also potential staffing would fall in line with that same story.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
One more that we'll have on here, it's the, come to our attention recently is, uh, the Alert Iowa System, encouraging folks to get signed up for that. Um, I've been thinking about a lot, but based on what you said earlier, Council, about what happened in Texas. And I think that we're in a better position. I don't want to compare the two. That was just absolutely tragic that I have no notes at all. I just have, we say it to be for everybody there, but that focus on continuing to improve our ability to communicate in those emergency moments with the second spatter, that's something we should look on.
That wraps up all of the topics that I have. Um, does anyone have any questions?
With that real quick and kind of a related subject right here, I didn't see them working sirens that's near my house. What's our annual maintenance update on that and how we check the sirens and, uh, just, just give us a quick update on that as, you know, some of these events are tragic. I just want to make sure Clive is covered with that.
Mayor Council, yes, we get a monthly report, uh, based off of all the siren testing. Uh, in the event there's a failure of any kind, we have a, an agreement with, uh, a vendor that'll go out almost immediately and get all those fixed. They do an annual service on them as well. Um, monthly we do siren testing and that's where we get a lot of that data from, but, um, past year or two, we've had great luck with our sirens period. Their test will maintain all the above.
It's a really great question though too, because whether you're inside, outside, near a siren, not near a siren, you're always next to this. So how do we show up here? That's.
It really becomes multiple messaging, Pete, when you've got your phone, you've got the alerts, you've got Greenie, you've got sirens. And that's the whole idea is to be able to get that message out quickly and concisely. So residents are hearing it from multiple platforms and they take it very, very seriously. So thanks, thanks for that.
Anything for Molly?
I really love the story that was on the Fire Department's Facebook page about the donation of flags.
Oh, yeah.
Catching flag Boulevard. I think that's very heartwarming and would be perfect kind of thing to cover.
Absolutely.
Anything we can share that's more personal like that?
Absolutely.
I think it's people's interest.
I'll add one more too, is the donation of the, uh, the Eagle Scott project in the, in our, in our front area here. I, I don't know if we've had, uh, I haven't seen a story on that, but, but that's, that's an ideal one, folks, so that our, our citizens know how to get rid of their flags in a respectful way. That's a great project. It looks great. Um, let's give that some notoriety. The young man had completed that. I've known him for many, many years and scouted with it for many years and, uh, it's really a really nice project. It worked out well for the city.
That one's already written.
It is.
Yeah, we just ran out of space last block.
It will be in the next. Um, but yes, uh, the mention of the Fire Department's flag donation story, um, and that's, those are the kinds of stories that we want to empower our departments to share, especially with, um, our Fire Department, Police Department and Leisure Services. They all have Facebook presence and they do a great job of sharing those stories and definitely want to help them amplify those stories as well.
Quality of our digital storytelling, this is credit to Molly and the work that she's done. She got her drone license pilot, uh, pilot license this last six months.
Last year, yes.
So, uh, we've been able to do so much more in-house. So, uh, we've been able to do so much more in-house video storytelling. The video that we featured in the mayor's state of the city address, something like that before Molly joined the team was something we were going out of the house and paying for. Molly did all of that. And we've got not terribly expensive tools, right? We haven't been buying crazy cameras or anything like that. We've been able to use a drone that we already had. We've been able to use inexpensive lighting kits and largely our phones as well. We did beef up, uh, some of the other, uh, cameras we have, you see Molly using for stills. But when we, when this council gave us direction to say, you want to do communications even bigger than we have in the past and with increasing quality, I hope what you see in the data here and, uh, and with Molly's excellent work is that we are meeting that standard. And so when we talk about what comes next, it is so that we continue to follow that policy direction that you all have given us. Do it even better and do it with even more volume and more volume. Now, Molly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you ever have any ideas for communications projects at our products, I'm always open to feedback. So I really appreciate, um, the story examples that you brought up tonight. All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Molly.
All right. Pete, I think we'll move to you since we're already with you.
Thank you to the Clive residents who are following the lawn watering ban, still living with it. This next cloud of rain, if it's like the last we've seen, will create some fluctuation in nitrate levels. As of today, they are still exceeding standard, though in the water, in the untreated water, but the water is safe to drink. And so we'll continue to share that message. Uh, and our teammates at Central Iowa Water Works are working very hard right now to answer different questions coming from different communities. Uh, but the big headline that I see coming out of Clive is people understand, they don't love it, but they understand how important it is for us to do this. And they've responded with a commitment to the common good that has, for the, going into the fourth week of the ban, really been unwavering. The, the few examples, less than five of people who make a mistake, uh, or intentionally ignoring the ban, which is really only one at this point. Um, they are, they, they're that great example of, yes, you're always going to have an exception. But the majority of our community understands and they've done really great work and we're very proud of what they, uh, what they've done. Been proud that as a metro, we've been able to keep our drinking water safe.
You still have one resident, resident or commercial?
Resident.
That will not provide by it and hasn't given from the beginning.
There have been repeatedly five.
Thank you, Pete.
Twenty-nine hundred meters and yesterday we were, dipped below a hundred thousand gallons of usage. So we have consistent around that number for the last two weeks, which is well, two and a half weeks, almost two weeks, full two weeks, which is, and to Pete's comment is, is impressive to, and a credit to the utility billing staff, as soon as they get a report, uh, whether it's through the email or through the app, they're on it. Calling them, yeah, ninety-nine percent of the time, somebody who has come back and didn't realize it was on and compliant al- almost immediately, which is just a testament to our community.
Very good. Thanks, Pete. Matthew, any correspondence or anything else? Matt?
Didn't want to, uh, take a minute to recognize this is, uh, Paula's last meeting. As your deputy city clerk, uh, Paula's been with us for nine years. And, uh, we'll be retiring. We'll have our retirement party tomorrow. And, uh, want to congratulate Paula on this next chapter and, uh, the council's opportunity, um, to, to recognize Paula for, for that commitment to our community for the last nine years. And, uh, she, uh, they will be, uh, her mic are still in Clive, but also in Florida, uh, as well as Mike down in Parker right now.
It's been there, go over two weeks.
So two weeks, so, um.
But he's online. Oh, he's online. I was wondering who the mic was. You know, that makes sense. So, uh, again, thank you Paula for your dedication to this community and, uh, for, uh,
sent through a lot of council meetings over the years and appreciate and good luck on your next chapter.
Thank you for giving me a chance.
Yeah. Couple of other things, Your Honor, I wanted to hit on, just a reminder, Clive Festival next week. Um, looking at the long-term forecast, and I'll talk about the short-term forecast here in a minute. Um, uh, fingers crossed, but, uh, looking like some cooler temps, uh, next weekend and, uh, less heavy rain chances. So take a high of seventy-nine on Friday next week. So, uh, that could be really good for, uh, for Clive Festival. Uh, also wanted to mention that, uh, we're working on, uh, Iowa League of Cities that set out their, uh, new laws of interest. We were talking about legislation earlier tonight. Uh, we're obviously active, council's acted on a number of items or working through that with the ADU ordinance and of course fireworks and some others. Uh, but there is still some other new laws of interest that we're evaluating at the staff level to see what any future impacts are. Uh, one that we'll want to bring to your attention, we were talking a little bit about it, staff meeting today, is, uh, some additional training requirements on open records, um, from the, um, the Iowa Public Information Board will kind of be initiating some training programs, but there will be, uh, a need for any, um, new board or commission member, new elected official to go through that. We're going to be talking at a staff level what that program looks like for us. So there will be a new state requirement, uh, for that training, uh, related to open records, uh, and open meetings, discussions. Um, and then lastly, of course, we have the, um, potential for some significant flooding. Uh, overnight tonight, we are on a flood, flash flood, um, watch. And, uh, been looking at a lot of information, even just sitting in the meeting now, it'll be kind of in the middle of the night when we'll probably be seeing the heaviest rain. Uh, staff went ahead, uh, this afternoon, we, uh, reached out to our, uh, our early notification, uh, a group of folks, maybe the businesses south of, uh, the Boulevard, um, to give them a chance just to do any maybe preparations before they were, uh, done for the day today. Um, and so, uh, fire department reached out to all those folks this afternoon, which was great. Uh, hopefully it's, uh, uh, much to do about nothing, but yeah, we want to be prepared. Uh, could, uh, with the three inches that we got in the basin, uh, earlier this week, of course, soil is pretty saturated at this point. Uh, and also, uh, the Redwood River is higher, uh, too, in terms of the rainfall we've seen in the basin. So if the Redwood River is higher, it's harder for Walnut Creek to drain out. Uh, so that'll be something that we'll be, uh, probably watching overnight and hopefully, uh, uh, not having operations in the morning, but we'll be prepared for that. Uh, staff will be prepared. Um, that all, uh, uh, one thing that I was looking to do tomorrow is, uh, on the legislative side is, uh, attended, uh, state, uh, city managers meeting up at Decora to talk about, uh, property tax reform and some work that the cities and Iowa League of Cities are working on in the interim in terms of, of potential, uh, proposals. Uh, depending on the level of flood, I'll forego that trip and be here. Uh, but hopefully, again, we're fighting for the worst and hoping for the best. Um, some storms really hit up east of us that could have dumped some rain on us. And of course, we didn't get as much rain this morning when those storms went through and some areas to the north got more. So we'll be keeping an eye on it over, over the night and, uh, hopefully you don't hear anything from me, uh, in the middle of the night or early in the morning. Let's all have, Your Honor, unless there's any questions.
Questions? We will counsel anything?
Yeah, report, Your Honor.
Michael?
Uh, dirt report. There are not a whole lot happening during dark. Uh, they're coming out with some of their new routes and such, as you mentioned that last time, it's fairly positive for us. And I think, uh, as they have, uh, yesterday or Tuesday was, um, the only hope really was to extend the land this contract. And so that hope went through. I was getting out of a problem.
Very good. Houston?
I let staff know and all of the council would be welcome to know about this too, that the Walnut Creek Watershed Group is going to be meeting on July twenty-first. When I'm not here, we're going to be in Sardinia and I will miss that, which council meeting too. But I was letting everyone know that it's likely for, there will be a presentation by Jennifer Cherry and Angela Conley on, uh, water report that was commissioned by Hope County. And I was really impressed with what Ray put together a response because I had said, I think it's really important for Clive to pay attention to that report to, you know, look at, um, ways we can participate. And Ray had some great ideas. She, uh, they not only listed what we are already doing, but had a number of suggestions that we can consider doing, especially related to monitoring of one home. So stay tuned, but that meeting will be at the Public Safety Center here at two o'clock.
Thanks, Houston.
Eric?
A couple of things, Mayor attended the Lanan Park groundbreaking with the rest of the council. It's great to see the project moving forward. Very excited to see how, uh, uh, an older Clive Park will be completely renovated. It's been a long, uh, it's been a long process, uh, but, uh, that's great to see. Uh, also, uh, a couple of things, Pete and I attended, uh, Hunter Club West, our HOA gave them an update on what's going on in the city and specifically their HOA and, uh, roads and some other things of that nature. Also sent out information on Greg Edwards' retirement party. I don't have those details in front of me, but Matt, if we could share that with, uh, rest of the council, your update, that would be great.
Yep.
That's it, Your Honor.
That was the HOA presentation received.
Very well.
Yeah, very well. And the road plan.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, you know, I mean, look, everybody wants wants it tomorrow, but I think they're happy with the progress we've made and the investments we've made over, you know, a number of years. Uh, so, yeah, no, I, I think it went very well. Are you good? We started, it was going to be a fifteen minutes and we were there for forty-five. So, you know.
That. All right. Well, I've been gone for the last ten days, but I can report that up in northern Minnesota, the fish were definitely biting. Less than six hours, we caught forty-six walleye. So.
A fish fry at your house.
Yeah, we got, got some fish. Um, but, uh, yeah, I'm sorry. I missed the groundbreaking.
Great. Thanks, Tim. Great.
Can you do that again?
I do.
Tell me that first, wait to.
Well, yeah.
That's big news.
Yeah, well, my little boy, we sent off to basic training on Tuesday, so he may yell that as we speak.
I like that.
Well, on that note, is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? Otherwise, we will be adjourned at eight twenty-two.